You must have gotten the clue. He quieted down quite nicely. Thank you. Well, good evening. I'm John Stride, the president of the City Club of Portland. We're thrilled to welcome you to the first of four programs where we will help introduce our 12 new Portland city councillors to the community. Before we begin, please silence your cell phones. Thank you. City Club is proud to host nonpartisan public forums, debates, and research to help Portlanders make informed decisions around elections and public policy. City Club is committed to providing space for people to gather and engage in civic, civil-civic dialogue and to enhance respectful discussions and positive exchanges. Tonight will be one of those. Members make City Club run by providing ideas, leading conversations, doing research, planning programs that address issues important to our local community. To support our mission and participate fully in City Club's work, become a member. We hope you'll consider it. You can visit pdxcityclub.org/membership and on that page you can let us know how you'd like to engage for City Club. And if you join tonight, we have a special deal. You can take $40 off your annual membership dues by using this discount code. Capital N-E-W forty. Thanks for bearing with that advertisement. Many people are responsible for developing tonight's program and a special thanks to Bobby Regan and Robin Denberg, the City Club Board of Governors Program Committee Chairs, who are co-producing this series. Thanks also to the other co-chair of programming, Sam Metz, on the committee, and especially to Kayla Kennett, the City Club Communications Manager, for all of their dedication and hard work in bringing these details together. They actually take quite enormous effort. We want to thank our series sponsor for this four-program series, The Standard, and our season sponsors, AARP of Oregon and Chevron, for their generous support. Thank them, please. And also, we have community partners who engage with us, KGW News, X-Ray FM, and the District Two Coalition, for helping us reach new audiences for this important conversation. Now, please mark your calendar for upcoming City Club events. Next Tuesday night, February 4th, at the Pacific Northwest College of Arts in downtown Portland, we'll have an Elections Reflections program. The Oregonians, Shane Dixon-Kavanaugh, will moderate a dynamic discussion with four Oregon political strategists who will discuss the results of the November 2024 election. Our next three programs in this series with city councillors will follow up on tonight's introduction. These programs, like tonight's, will take place on Tuesdays at 6:00 PM. We'll meet District Four councillors representing the entire West Side and parts of inner-southeast Portland on February 11th. We'll meet District Three councillors representing inner-southeast Portland on February 25th, and we'll wrap up this series on March 4th with District One councillors representing outer-east side. Now, let's turn to tonight's program. With the adoption of the city charter changes, Portland moved away from its longtime form of government. Using a, there you go. Using a ranked-choice voting system, Portland voters elected 12 city councillors in November with three councillors elected to each, to represent each of the four city districts. These councillors were sworn into office just earlier this month, so give them a little bit of slack. Tonight's program features city councillors from Portland's District Two, which covers north and northeast Portland, including just about all Portland neighborhoods north of I-84 and east of the Lament River, west of I-205. This district spans from St. John's to the Lloyd District, and for Portland is fairly young and diverse. About 57% of the residents in this district own their own homes. Our new District Two councillors are Elena Pertilguinny, who's just been elected as council chair. Congratulations. And also Dan Ryan and Samir Canal. Each will tell us a little bit about themselves in their opening remarks. We're excited to hear about their hopes and dreams and plans for District Two and for the city in general. Thank you all for sharing this evening with us. Our program tonight is moderated by Sophie Peel, my left, a Lament Week City Hall reporter since 2001. 2021, not that old, sorry. Sophie has also covered state politics, including reporting in the 2023 that led to the resignation of former Secretary of State. She previously worked for NPR in Georgia. So we're pleased to report that Sophie has agreed to moderate all four of our city councillor events. We want to thank, we want to thank those of you who submitted questions as you register for the program. And Sophie has been given all of those questions and has incorporated many of them and the themes from them in her own questions. Tonight, at the end of the program, we'll have a short live audience question opportunity, so look for that. As I wrap up this intro, I invite you to stay after the program for an informal meet and greet with our new city councillors. You can also meet City Club members, there are many of them here, to hear more about what we're doing at the City Club of Portland. Now, please join me in welcoming our new District Two city councillors and our moderator, Sophie.
Well, first of all, thank you, John, and thank you to the City Club of Portland for having us tonight. I think we're all really happy to be here. Like he said, they've only been in office for one month, and they're also ushering in a completely new form of government. So there's a lot of questions that probably don't have super concrete answers yet, and that's just how it's gonna go. I think this transition's probably gonna take a couple of years to really sort out, and so there's a lot of big questions, and I think we're all sort of fumbling through it to a degree. We are gonna start this program with about 20 minutes of District Two specific questions, and then we're gonna go to some more citywide questions. But first, I'd like to ask each of you to just take one or two minutes to introduce yourselves. Tell us a, tell us a little bit about your background, both professional and civic background, why you chose to run for office, and what you believe you will be bringing to City Hall. Let's start with you, councillor Canal.
Thanks. Thanks to everyone for being here. Thanks, Sophie. My name's Samir Canal. I am one of the three new councillors for District Two. I was born in this district, the old Best Kaiser Hospital, it's now a part of Adidas headquarters on Greeley, and I had the privilege of growing up in the Portland metro area, coming to venues like this, growing up, and coming into what is now District Two. I spent most of my social time at, on places on Alberta specifically, as well as Williams in Mississippi, and it's great to get a chance to get back out to the Alberta Rose. I worked at the city for the last three years doing community engagement around community safety issues in the city's Community Safety Division, which is now the Public Safety Service area. I started out doing the project management for the Police Accountability Commission, and then moved over to supporting other advisory groups, I see a couple of the members of which in the crowd, so hi. And I, in doing that work, it came, it became very clear to me that under our former form of government, community engagement would go up, and the input of people would go up the org chart, and it would stop at a level prior to reaching the city council. It wouldn't be implemented in, in terms of what the city council would actually do. And that's not how I view governance, so I ran for city council to try to have a system where we can co-create policy between community and elected leaders. And I think one of the great things about this election is although there's gonna be differences of opinion among the 12 of us, and even the three within a given district, everyone here is committed to having a government that's more responsive to you, and that's part of why the 2022 charter change was so valuable as well. So in terms of my background, I'm a human rights activist scholar, that's where I start. My lens and looking at everything is through the filter of how does this affect your rights and what you deserve, and what we all deserve. And getting to apply that to public safety, which is a very tricky set of issues, and create a system where we can be safer and also have the ability to not just survive economically, but also to thrive, is a core part of what I am all about. I also got a chance to serve on the Parks Board. I am a big believer in recreational programs. I play dodgeball. And I, I think that the things that make Portland Portland are not in one issue area, and I'm excited to get a chance to explore all those different things in my service on city council. So I'm sure we'll have more questions, but I'll stop there. Thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Pertilguinny.
Thank you so much, Sophie, and thank you to City Club for putting this on, and the Alberta Rose for hosting us all tonight, and to all of you for being here. We are less than a month in and already doing the work of civic engagement, the work of engaging with community, and that's a really exciting thing. My name is Ilana Pertilguinny. I have lived in northeast Portland for a little over, around 18 years now, I believe. And my background is in advocacy and policy work. I started my career doing advocacy with labor unions, working on economic and social justice issues. I worked in policy development for two Oregon governors. I was Governor Brown's Legislative Director and have worked with a number of organizations in the region doing policy work and advocacy work since then. I am really excited about the opportunity on this new city council to dig into some of the things that make Portland Portland. This is actually my neighborhood. Welcome to my neighborhood. It's so good to have you all here tonight. But I think this neighborhood encompasses a lot of the things that people think about when they think about, why do I love Portland? Right? Our wonderful parks, our wonderful community, our wonderful restaurants. And we are facing a lot of challenges that make it harder for us to, to have those things. And as I was considering running for office, something that I kept coming back for was this idea of being future-focused, of thinking about what Portland is going to be 10, 20, 30 years from now. And how do we take those things that we love about our individual neighborhoods and those challenges that we're facing, some of which I'm sure we're going to talk about tonight, and actually see the opportunity to really move toward the city we want to live in and move toward the, the opportunities that we have before us when we start to think about not just what is the crisis we're in today, but what can we build and what can we make Portland, and how can we get out of these crises to become the incredible city that I think we all strive to be? So that is, that's what I'm really excited about.
Great, thank you. Councillor Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Sophie. Hello, everyone. Thank you, Bobby Regan, fellow school board member back before Sophie was born. And it's just great to be here. I'm from the Arbor Lodge neighborhood. I bought a home there in 2000. I live there with my spouse, Moshe Lee Reyes, who's a councillor out at David Douglas School District. And I'll do more on that later. I'm just thinking of the heaviness of school districts today with some of the announcements from on high. Everyone boo, sss. So I am excited to be in this role. It's a brand-new job. I want everyone to know that I know that. And I have to tell you, I'm already enjoying it because I went to two neighborhood association meetings this month. And in the old form of government, it was really hard to get to those. And so I'm excited about being on the ground and being a community council member and then being a fierce, sassy councillor that calls BS when it's necessary on the bureaucracy. I did that as a commissioner. I don't know why it would stop now as a councillor. And I think that's what you need from your reps, because we have to make sure that the services that are delivering to all of you keep improving. When I went around, which is what I loved about campaigning, I didn't love a lot of it, but I did love the chance of going door-to-door. And what I noticed is that people basically said the same things, no matter what their political paraphernalia was, and that's not a bad word, and they really just wanted to, able to walk safely to the store. They, they wanted to grow up here. They wanted their kids to return here. And as a lifelong Portlander, youngest of eight, born and raised in this district, dad had a business in St. John's for 30 years, mom went to University of Portland after raising eight children. She got an honorary degree as a social worker right away, I think. That was like seven boys, can you imagine? And, yeah, and so I'm just really grateful to be a part of this team that's building this. I ran also because I like building things. I like system development. And you all passed a really exciting theory, and now we have to build it and make it real. So buckle up. Thanks.
Speaking of this new theory, you know, obviously a big part of the reason that we passed this charter reform measure was to have better geographical representation across the four districts. Obviously, we have three District Two councillors here right now. I'm curious, if each of you could briefly say what you believe makes District Two unique or special, if it has sort of a distinct personality, or any hidden gems in District Two?
Okay, I think we have the three best high schools in Portland public schools. It begins with Roosevelt out north, Jefferson and Grant. I also think it's pretty exciting that the two great rivers of our state come together at Kelly Point, which borders District Two. So I think all of our decisions really must always be mindful of those two great waterways. And after that, I think that a lot of what Portlanders are experiencing in District Two have a lot of similarities to other parts of the city. But I do think this gives us a chance to spend more time, especially in the outer reaches of District Two. What I noticed when I was on the former form of government is that it seemed like the further you got away from the center of the city, there was less opportunity to hear their voice. So District Two has a lot of that as well.
Wait, oh, there we are. Councillor Pertilguinny.
So I'll pick up where, where councillor Ryan left off. District Two has a lot of very unique neighborhoods and spaces to it that experience a lot of similar challenges. The challenges campaigning that I heard from folks who lived in St. John's, who lived in Cully, who lived on Hayden Island, all different, but all connected to this idea of feeling like they weren't getting the, they weren't getting their issues heard. They weren't getting the attention that they needed from the city. Different issues in different parts of the district, right? The issues that I heard when I was in Hollywood and Irvington and some of the closer-in neighborhoods were, were different from each other, but more similar to each other than some of the concerns I heard in other parts of the district. And I think that district representation will give us the opportunity to really spend time with each of those communities in different ways, with each of the communities within our district that I'm really excited about. District Two, you asked about hidden gems. I think a lot when I think about hidden gems in District Two, about our outdoor spaces, our parks, but also along the northern reaches of our district. We have so many opportunities to engage with nature in a way that not every part of the city has, which I think is really phenomenal.
Councillor Canal.
Yeah, I'll start by also shouting out Kelly Point Park. That's one of my favorite places to go to. I'm kind of loathe to bring it up here in case it gets packed, and it's usually pretty quiet, so I don't wanna make any of these less hidden gems, but... And then I really like Kaba's Kitchen and all the food carts at Prost. Those are places I go pretty frequently. In terms of the, the sort of character of the district, we got a lot of renters here, and I think that's a notable thing about the district. There's a lot of engagement with parks, and I don't think it's a coincidence that three of us all care deeply about parks. We have different parts of the system that we worked on, but yeah, it's a really important part. We share a historic disinvestment, but maybe without as much of the attention focused on it as like District One does, for example, out east. And then I'll, I would be remiss if I didn't bring up that, that prior to the 80s, all of the communities of color that came through Portland historically started in District Two. Obviously, we're in, you know, the, near Albina, that region is particularly notable, but there's a lot of other communities that have come through as well, and even some of those that are primarily now in east Portland, there's a historic tie to this district. So I think that's part of what makes it so great. I've always enjoyed, you know, growing up when I was in high school and started driving, I was in Vancouver, and I'd come to this district to find people that looked like me after school, so that's a core part of this as well.
Great, thank you. Well, now I'd like to take a slightly less happy note of what we see as the biggest issues in District Two. Councillor Ryan, I think you mentioned that, you know, there's a lot of issues in District Two that are citywide issues, and maybe District Two experiences them a little bit differently. But I'm curious if you guys could maybe talk a little bit about one or two issues that you believe are, you know, whether it's a, a particular intersection in District Two that is problematic or dangerous, or a specific, you know, sort of hyper-local community in District Two that is not getting the attention that it deserves, potentially, you know, a gun violence hotspot. Let's talk a little bit about what you guys see as the biggest issues in District Two.
Want me to start this one?
Go for it.
Yeah, I, I won't bore you with a long list of intersections. I do have quite a few, but I'll, I'll say New Columbia and the area on Trenton out there, there's a lot of kids who come across the streets there where there's two schools, and there's no crosswalks. And I think that's sort of one of the many microcosm type of intersections and areas in terms of where we don't have enough of the traffic safety-related infrastructure that we need. Parks, I think we've, I'm sure you've all brought it up to at least one of us at some point about the pools and swim classes. I know we've all heard it. We've talked about it a lot already, and what, how we're gonna try and, and work on that. And I think those are on the, the traffic safety side. I would definitely highlight that. The area around Dawson Park has historic levels of gun violence, and it's usually been higher than the rest of the city. And there's been a lot of work done there, and we can dig into that, but I think those are areas that we're all familiar with up by northeast Ivy as well, over on Ivy and MLK, yeah.
I'll add to those without repeating them. Northeast Portland, North Portland have five neighborhoods that in a major earthquake will be completely cut off from the rest of the city. And when I think about things that are particularly impactful to District Two, those resilience issues stand out to me. I'm also, councillor Ryan brought up the federal administration, though not by name. District Two has some significant immigrant populations. And I'm thinking a lot about the, the immigrant communities within District Two and how we support those communities as well. We think about many of our new immigrants going to District One, but we, we have a number of communities within District Two.
And we will get into that later. Councillor Ryan.
Yeah, the MAX, the yellow line on the MAX, has had a really big dip in ridership of
over the last five years. And we've built a lot of housing that would be a part of using that as infill. And I really hope that we can keep partnering with TriMet to improve safety on those, on that line. It's sad when I notice how few people are standing at stops. And just 10 years ago, that wasn't the case. So I want to make sure that we have a real big focus on that. Everything that you all said was great. It's great to go third because you can basically say ditto. But I also think the music scene in District Two is unique. Mississippi has great music along Alberta. Shout out to my friend who owns both the Radio Room and also Key's Lounge. I just think it has a really good vibe for nightlife. So I'm hoping that the night and evening, the evening and weekend economy at District Two keeps rising up as well.
Great, thank you. Counselor Canal, you had mentioned Dawson Park, which I think many of you are probably familiar with. It's been the hotspot of gun violence. And the city has also sort of grappled with a number of different ways of sort of combating that gun violence, but it's sort of been mixed, mixed results, I guess you could say. It's still, you know, kind of regarded as a more dangerous spot, especially for the parkgoers who go there. It's historically, you know, a black park, and they're sort of an older black community that spends a lot of time there. And that park has, you know, it's been a dangerous place for them, as well as sort of the families around it. And I know the former city council sort of grappled with, and this gets into the whole question of what is safety? What does safety look like? What does public safety look like? I'm curious, and again, the former city council, they were sort of debating between, is it more about built infrastructure? Do we change how sort of the traffic flow to, you know, ensure that there aren't more drive-by shootings? Or do we deploy more cops? And that's, I think, you know, it's a question that I think a lot of current public officials have as well. So I'm curious how you guys think of public safety, very particular to Dawson Park.
I want to throw out just a third piece to that, too, because there's the police response, and there's the built infrastructure, which is really important. And my guess is that Counselor Canal will want to speak to that. But the third thing is activation. And I actually had a pre-scheduled Canvas kickoff during the campaign from Dawson Park a week after the shooting there, and kept that event scheduled. And before, got there a little early and walked around and talked to folks in the park about their experience over that past week. And I had multiple people say to me, and this is a true story, by the way. This is not just like elected official rhetoric. Multiple people say to me, you know, parks used to be here. We used to have events here. We used to have the summer concerts and movies in the parks here. And we don't anymore. And there's a lot that goes into decision-making around where activation happens. And we have to move activation around the city and give every neighborhood, every community, every park a little bit of love. So I'm not criticizing that decision, but I do think with this new form of government, having us a little closer to the ground, we have the opportunity to say, hey, this community is really missing that. They're really missing that activation. And I think that that's a third piece in terms of the tools that we have that we shouldn't discount.
Great, thank you. Counselor Canal?
Yeah. I think there's also a fourth piece I'll add as well, which is, it's not just about deploying police there in a patrol context. It's about preventing reoffending by finding the last shooter. And so when we talk about police, we also have to talk about investigators and ensuring that we're actually seeing crimes get solved. That's a really important metric, and it hasn't been enough of a part of the conversation. I'm really glad that Counselor Ryan brought up the oversight piece and holding bureaus accountable. That's going to be a part of our approach. I am one of the two co-chairs along with Counselor Novick in District Three of the Community and Public Safety Committee. And so really, big picture, safety is holistic and preventative. It does include activating space. That's really important. That lives both within the public safety system and programs like Safe Blocks, which also does the built environment work. It also lives in places like Parks and Recreation. We need to be getting more people, you know, out and around in our parks, but also in our community centers. Dishman's right there, for example. And so there's a lot that we can do there. And one of the really big success stories around the built environment side, we have two actually, is Holiday Park by Lloyd Center. If you've seen how that's been cleaned up over the last five years, that's the Safe Blocks program. I wish we had Mary here to get her flowers because she's earned them, and everyone else who worked on that as well. And then I'll also mention the intervention around Mount Scott Park a few years ago, where we had, I think it was 11 shootings in 13 days, most of which were drive-bys. And one of the primary interventions was putting in traffic barrels to not allow people to speed away quickly. And that wasn't the only intervention. There was a police intervention, too, mind you. But together, these things are going to, and we saw it in that scenario, really diminish the propensity and the likelihood of the next shooting. Can't go back in time. We can always prevent the next thing. And so yes and is generally the response that I'll have to most of those types of questions in safety.
We just had a tour there on Friday. We went all around District Two. And I think what stuck out to me the most was the fact that there's a table now back in place where the elders, I'm one of those two, are playing dominoes again. And so I know that sounds really simple, but when I lived in New York City in the 80s, in Harlem, it was so important that you had those spaces where people could connect, they could play their dominoes, and they were the watchers of the community. And when that was in motion, and they were in that stable place, it does a lot more than I think people realize. And so the activation, the safety, the partnerships with the neighborhood, with the two communities of faith that are right in that area, with Emmanuel Legacy Hospital, we just have to keep activating that space. And it was a sunny day. It was Friday. There was a lot of us, so that probably helped activate it. But it just made a difference when you see people in the park. And that's always going to be bigger than any police activity, is just having it be a vibrant space where people are playing and laughing and connecting again. Thank you. Dominoes.
I wish we could spend more time on District Two questions specifically, but we're going to broaden out a little bit to citywide questions. Big question of the next three months is our budget problem, and it's a monstrosity. We have a $100 million budget shortfall. And governments oftentimes say they have a budget shortfall, and sometimes they find ways to patch it up. This one is extra big. So this one is not going to be one that is easily remedied. And I, I think you all ran, obviously, on big goals. And some of those big goals take money. Now that you've been in office for a month, and you've sort of realized the severity of our budget crisis, have your, not necessarily have your goals changed, but have you, have you sort of changed your perspective a little bit, or have you changed, I guess, have you changed your goals a little bit as far as looking at our kind of looming budget crisis and what cuts might look like? Counselor Ryan, we'll start with you.
Well, the acceptance of the challenge is definitely more present today. I think that what we're experiencing right now is also a golden opportunity. And what I mean by that is, we did this major change in government, so we're building the legislative side. And my concern and perhaps criticism at this moment is, there's been a lot of adding on the top. And is anyone old enough to remember the Flintstone cartoon at the beginning, where they'd put stuff on top and it would like tip over? And I'm concerned about that. And so, you know, how many DCAs do we really need? How many people in those offices do we need? Sorry to pick on the DCAs. I know all of them, and I apologize in advance. But my point is, we have to be bold enough and courageous enough to actually do system change work. And, you know, it's not just about a new logo and new colors. It's about really scrubbing it and looking where there can be efficiencies met. And so I'm excited about that opportunity, because I bet most people here have not enjoyed the way the services are responding to your needs. So I think it's a golden opportunity to do that type of change and editing to the whole enterprise. And I know I've been asking for organization charts, so it's time to get really geeky about how we can look for those paths.
I will say, reporting on this for the past month, I think it's become increasingly clear that most, if not all, council members are a little bit frustrated by that maybe top heaviness to some degree. And I don't want to speak for everyone, but I think I've heard it from pretty much every, okay, great. So I'm curious, Councilors Pertle-Ginni and Canal, are you sort of, do you agree with Ryan that there's a lot of, cuts can be made, cuts can be found that don't necessarily include programs and services that are delivered to Portlanders? And what might those look like?
Cuts can certainly be found that are not just cutting back on services. As Counselor Ryan said, when this change went into effect, all of the additive work happened on the administrative side, though not on the council side. And I don't know if we're going to talk about that or not, but that's a piece of it. But the additive work happened on the administrative side, and the reducing didn't, the streamlining didn't, the how do we make this work more efficiently didn't. I had somebody say to me once when I was doing advocacy work, that budget cuts are the time when you figure out what programs aren't working well, and you start doing government more efficiently. And that's fantastic. And I know that we are already looking for the places where we can do that. And I also don't want to sugarcoat this situation, because these cuts are so large, that I don't think we can do it all through efficiencies, right? That rosy look of budget cuts are when you make government more efficient is great for small cuts. And this is a really big cut. And so I just don't want to leave people with the impression that we can solve this budget hole through efficiencies alone. That certainly needs to be part of the puzzle, though, because we want to preserve as many public services as possible, so that, so that you all are getting the city that you need and deserve and pay for.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. I agree with everything that, actually, both my colleagues said on this. I think there, I was with striking workers at PSU AAUP, and one of the chants that I'd hear there is chop from the top. And it was, as a person who's been a sub-management worker, rank-and-file worker in a lot of previous jobs, as well as, you know, someone who just generally understands that it's often the frontline workers who get the short end of the stick in situations like this. We, we do need to first look at our management structures and our management levels. The sheer rows on the org chart, the number of rows, is often a problem. And so I definitely want to start by looking there when we get to that point, because I agree that we're not going to be able to get there exclusively through efficiencies. There are efficiencies and to be found. And I do want to say that one of the things that we noticed at the public safety service area was you combine two groups that are doing a similar function at two different departments. What you end up finding is that sometimes they're being paid at two different levels. And then at first, it's not easy to take the people who are getting paid higher down. First, you kind of rank it up, and you find the efficiency and savings over time as people get transferred to other things or attritioned out. They find new jobs, and you find even fewer of them. So there are delayed impacts sometimes of consolidation and savings, and also, that's not going to be enough either. I'll also mention, we have a lot of contracts at the city, and I'm not talking about the contracts where we have community outreach, where paying someone to build something. I'm talking about people we pay to think for us, usually not in the Portland area. We're sending your tax dollars out to Philadelphia or something to pay for someone to think for us and make our staff into contract managers when they're project managers or they're analysts. And so there's tens of millions of dollars there. And even with all of that, it may not be enough. But we got to start there.
Thank you. We got to move right along. So sorry. I know each of these topics, we could take probably an hour for each, but we got to keep it moving. Homelessness, it's a top issue for, I think, all Portlanders. I think, as many people know, Multnomah County and the city of Portland have historically sort of butted heads over how best to address it. It seems, at least from the outside, that there is a little bit more clarity on how the two governments want to move together. But we are obviously, like we just talked about, facing a huge budget shortfall. We have a new mayor. Mayor Keith Wilson is very intent on ending unchallenged homelessness. He's got a very ambitious shelter plan. It's a little bit unclear how exactly that's going to be worked into the city's budget, or if it will be. But I'm curious how each of you believe the city council, and maybe as individuals, can sort of leverage your position to actually make this whole machine move faster? Because we've got a lot of money out there, and yet it is a persistent concern that it just feels like not a whole lot is happening. So as individual counselors, and maybe as a new council as a whole, what sort of leverage and power do you think you guys have in really affecting change in this area?
You guys are looking at me as president. I have a little bit of baggage here, so yeah, let me go first. I have been frustrated. It's been documented. You might have written a story about this, that I just wish we knew how many people are suffering on our streets, and that we could differentiate between those that are having economic hardship temporarily, can quickly get back into housing, and quickly get them into housing, and those who need more services. Thank you. The reason why the Safris villages were built, and they're actually getting results, is because we need to take some time getting to know someone who's been traumatized, living on our streets for years. Many, we found, don't even have their social security number. They're not even, they're not documented. Like, we don't know they exist on our streets in Portland. And they could have services, but we don't have them hooked into them. And so building that trust is always going to be a big issue with me. And I'll always talk about this. And I think that the partnership is getting better. I also am well-known as having some tension with the county. And I think that's important. When I was having people tell me, it's not, it's not good that you guys are arguing. It's like, are you kidding me? This is the number one issue facing our city. It's really complex, and complex problems take complex local solutions, not little silver bullet ideas that are going to fix homelessness in 10 years. And so we just need to get out of denial. We're in so much denial in my home state and in my city about mental health and about addictions, and we think, yeah. And when I go to a Safris village and I find out how many people, even with the chance to attain services, are still in their active addiction, it's a big number. Some of the sites are doing much better with that. But I just hope that we can get on the same page about a North Star that's moving people from dependence to independence. Dependence on, say, drugs and alcohol, dependence even on government services, to being independent of drugs and alcohol, being in the workforce again, and being a part of humanity that's participating. I don't know anyone that's an addict on our street, if you really have a good conversation with them, that wants to remain there.
Counselor Pertle-Ginni is one of the new counselors, who was not on the prior council. Where do you think you, or the city council as a whole, has, really has leverage to push the county to move faster or implement new ideas?
Well, we're part of a partnership here, right? We have a joint, a joint committee, a joint office where we do this work together. And I think that partnership is really important. But I also think it's important that we are partners there, that we are part of the conversation about what direction we're moving in. And we know that funds are going to be tight for this work. That means we need to focus on what we know will work, what has been successful in the past. And I don't think we can afford to not be together on this, but we also need to make sure that the folks who we from the city have at the table are representing the city's interests and are making sure that the funds that are spent are done in coordination with the other work that we're doing at the city, so that we can be successful here.
And Counselor Canal, I'll ask you the same question, but a little bit differently. So the Joint Office of Homeless Services, which is what Counselor Pertle-Ginni was referring to, is the joint city and county office that sort of deals with homelessness. We both put in money. The county puts in a lot more money than the city does, but over the past two years, the former city council has been really challenging that, the county in that partnership, basically saying, we don't have equal voice. We call this a joint office, but the county is basically making all the decisions. We have a new agreement now. It's a little bit unclear. I think it's too early to say whether it really is a true partnership, and if the city really does have more say in sort of big decisions. So Counselor Canal, I'm curious, and I feel like I'm harping on sort of the same question, but how does the city exert its influence in this office when historically, it's not, it's, you know, it's, perspective has not really been honored in that partnership?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I think there's three ways that that can happen. One is in terms of the direct leveraging of our dollars through our budgetary process. I think that's often the thing that comes up the most when I talk to community members, and it's on the list. I think it's probably the third thing chronologically to happen. Ideally, it's not your Plan A. But before that, I'd say, building relationships really does matter. I think there was a broken relationship between previous city leadership and the county. And having those shared conversations to start the process of aligning is really important. And then in between those, there is the system that our Counselor Pertle-Ginni mentioned, which is the Guinea mentioned, which is the homelessness, the HRS, the system with all the committees and things. And we'll have some of our councillors on it, too. So when we talk about granular things, it's getting more representatives from the city in the room for that. And one of the most important things I've found in all of the work I've done in government is if you're not in the room, you're not actually able to exert anything, any influence on the process. So getting more of the folks that are going to be representing the city's vision in that room, there's multiple rooms, the committees in this process, is going to be really important.
Great, thank you.
I want to add also, we have a brand-new city council, but there's also a new, a new majority on the county commission. We have three new county commissioners, and this is a real opportunity for us to, to sit down proverbially together, right? Not necessarily in the same room all at the same time, but to sit down together and say, "What is our North Star? What is it that we're driving toward, and how do we make sure that's aligned?" And I think we have a really important opportunity, as both bodies have new majorities.
So let's briefly talk about taxes. We won't spend too long on this. Councillor Ryan, you've referred to, you've said to me oftentimes, you refer to them as the big three, which is Portland Clean Energy Fund, supportive, supportive housing services tax, and then the preschool for all tax. So Governor Kotek's Central City Task Force recently came out with a report, I think it was a couple weeks ago, that was, the top-line findings were that Portlanders feel overtaxed, businesses feel overtaxed, they don't feel like they are seeing results from their tax dollars, and that potentially those taxes are driving some people out of the city. I'm curious, and briefly, if, you know, if one of you doesn't want to speak to this, that's, that's fine as well, because we have more material to get through in the next 10 minutes. But I'm curious if you guys think that, you know, this overtaxation is sort of an overblown thing, or if it's a very real concern for Portlanders? And if so, what do we do about it? Councillor Ryan, I'll start with you.
I heard at a lot of doorsteps, it's very real. Especially, this is a family town. I often put, I always put families first. In this budget season, I'll be thinking of that mom who's going to the park with her three kids. I think of the person in a wheelchair that's trying to get on the max. I'll think of the two elders that go on a stroll at 3:00 PM, and are they going to be safe? And so we have to really make sure that our streets are safe again, and that people find joy on our streets again. Portland's vibe is about music and arts and beauty, and we've always been a destination for people to have a lifestyle in Portland. And if we don't bring that back, we're not going to have enough revenue for anything in the next 10 years. So on that point, there is a pinch point that people have reached. And I think the governor repeated what was said last year at the Moda Center with the business lobby, that she wanted to see taxes be flat this year. And I think that that direction is something we have to take seriously, because we can't afford more people to be tapped out and move out of Portland.
Councillor Pearl Guinea?
As I have had this conversation with our neighbors, right, with your neighbors, with Portlanders, I often pause and ask people, "If you felt like Portland had amazing parks, the best schools, was a safe city for everybody, would you think your taxes were too high?" And over and over again, fair, that's fair. But I also hear from a lot of people that if they felt like we had everything they would want to see in the city, they probably wouldn't be as worried about their taxes. And I know for a lot of people, there is that pinch point, and the answer is yes. But I think it's important to remember the value proposition, and to remember that there are folks who are feeling like they are not getting what they are paying for. And at the city, as well as the county and metro, we need to be figuring out how we can provide services effectively for all of you, so that you do feel like, and I'll add schools in there, too, because some of our taxes go to our schools, and I think that's a really important piece of this, you all should feel like you have the best parks in the country, the best schools possible, a place where you want your kids to come back to, to raise their kids. And to me, that has to be the overlying, the overlying piece of this conversation around taxes is, what are we trying to build in our city? What can we afford? And how do we get there with those two pieces of information together?
Thank you. Councillor Canal?
Yeah, I don't have much more to say beyond what councillor Pearl Guinea said. It is the gap between...
I was hoping you'd say that, so I could get to my next question.
My focus is the gap between what people feel like they're paying for and what they're getting. And I think if we increase what they're getting, that will resolve the issue.
Great, thank you. Okay, last question before we go to a couple of audience questions. The city, for many years, had a very renowned neighborhood association system. It did a lot of good. There were also very real concerns that it was not a system that was inclusive enough in certain neighborhoods. But a lot of those neighborhood associations have not received the same level of funding that they've had from the city for decades past. I'm curious if you guys believe that in this new system, there is sort of a renewed place for neighborhood associations. Councillor Ryan, I think you probably have a lot of thoughts about this one, but I'm actually going to start with councillor Canal, since I, since you didn't respond to the last question, which I, thank you.
I just agreed. Yeah, I think we, there was a false binary created, where we can either fund and focus on and listen to neighborhood associations or communities of color. And I think that is not accurate in two different ways. One is, these are really, historically not that large sums of money, in the grand scheme of the overall, you know, billions of dollars that our city budget is. But also, and going to neighborhood associations, neighborhood associations, I went to 20 of them in my old job last year, separate from campaigning. And first off, a lot of them are diverse. And I want to firstly, like, recognize that. And there's a lot of work that's been done by some of the neighborhood associations to ensure that their boards, you know, reflect the diversity of their neighborhoods. But secondly, we need to do community engagement and co-creation of policy with everybody. And that includes neighborhood associations. And if we stop there, we're going to have the same feelings from other parts of the city that we had a few years ago. So I don't want to stop there. I want to include, but it's not a replacement. It's, you know, power grows when it is shared.
Thank you. Councillor Ryan?
I do think that in this new form of government, the opportunity to attend neighborhood association meetings, be with the people of those neighborhoods, listen to their concerns of that exact neighborhood, which is different at each meeting, is really an awesome opportunity to bring them, I think, back to a respectful place. Our neighborhood associations was something that people used to, around the world, would come to Portland to admire and appreciate, because it was a way that our government was really connecting on the grassroots level. And I've seen more and more diversity at neighborhood association meetings. I've seen more of the community partners in attendance. So I believe that we're beyond that binary conversation, and it's exciting to keep building that.
Great, thank you. Okay, I think, are you good with, go ahead. Okay, great. All right, we're going to move to a couple of audience questions. We only have time for two or three. And so if you would like to ask a question, please approach the podium. What I would ask, and City Club made this very clear to me, is that if you have a preamble to your question, please limit it to 30 seconds, and your question must have a question mark at the end of it. It cannot, it cannot be a statement that you put a question mark at the end of. So make your way up, and again, we'll probably only have time for two or three.
Let's make a line here, please. There's lights.
I know. I kind of like lights on people.
Shall I go ahead? Hello, new councillors. Jamie Partridge here. I'm a retired litter carrier, carried male in this neighborhood for 25 years, lived down the street. And my question is about our immigrant neighbors and the threat of mass deportations coming from federal government. And first of all, what you all think you can do as city commissioners, but councillors, but also if you would encourage folks in neighborhoods, when they see ICE activity, to report it to the emergency ICE hotline, so that people can be mobilized to provide legal assistance, legal observation, protests, even preventing arrests.
Okay, so the question is, what are you going to do to help protect our immigrant Portlanders?
Mr. Partridge, it's very good to see you. We absolutely can help encourage people to report when they see ICE. I actually have information out, I believe, on my social media channels from a few days ago, with information about how to report that. It is really important, though, that people only report things that you see firsthand, because there are so many rumors that start spinning up, and then we don't have good information. So I would encourage you, if you see something firsthand, to call those numbers, make that report, but not to continue to spread information that you don't have firsthand accounts of. To the broader question, what can we do policy-wise? Oregon is a sanctuary state. That means that Portland is a sanctuary city. Unfortunately, that designation is actually a pretty passive designation. That means we just don't help ICE. So I want to make sure that folks aren't, aren't assuming that we can do more than we can. But we are definitely having conversations with our federal delegation, with the mayor, amongst councillors, about what else we can do and what opportunities there are that we can take on, without drawing a target on our city that actually makes Portland a less safe place for our immigrant communities, because we want to make sure that we're not inadvertently creating more challenges.
Before we go to our next question, I just want to remind people that the councillors are going to be sticking around for about 30 minutes after. So if you don't get your question answered right now, there is an opportunity to direct them, approach them directly. Okay, great, next question.
Tiana Tozer, person with a disability, sued the city for access because of the tents on the sidewalks. But my main, and I have a lot of questions, but my main question is, the new contact form online, you're supposed to be accessible. You're supposed to represent us. That contact form disenfranchises the most low-income people with disabilities, your minorities. Where are your emails and phone numbers on the website? Because that is not representing the people. You can't represent the people unless you hear from the people.
So where, where can Portlanders find their email addresses?
When we started, we had, against the recommendations of everybody who had worked on this transition, one staff person. And it is really important that we can actually respond to people who contact our office. So those forms on our website actually go directly to a number of different people who can help sort through those concerns, make sure that bureaus are getting emails directly related to those, if it's something that a bureau could address. Those were put up as a way to make sure that we could actually be responsive to people who reached out. Now that we have additional staff coming on, you'll see that many councillors are putting other contact information on their websites, and that transition is happening actively last week and this week for most council offices, because you're right, we do need other ways for you to reach us. But it doesn't do you any good, and it doesn't help us be responsive if we have forms of communication out there that we literally don't have enough staff to respond to. So you are right, that is not the ideal way to have as an only form of contact. And it was done to make sure we could be responsive, and you should be seeing changes on most councillors' websites, if they're not up already, over the next week or two.
It's really important for our minorities.
Thank you. And just now, all of us can say that it's been IT hell, just to get an email to work in the last month. So things are improving, finally.
Hi, so my name is Sarah Rissar. I'm with Families for Safe Streets. I've been to every fatal crash site in Portland that happened, almost every, in 2024. So we recently, I'll try to be brief, we held an event in late November to honor all victims of road fatalities. We had five newly-elected city councillors show up. They were all from districts three and four. Districts two and one have the vast majority of road fatalities in the city of Portland. The city of Portland also has had a skyrocketing number of road fatalities over the past decade. So why, yeah, okay. So what are you going to do to improve road safety, and why haven't you been showing up from district two?
I didn't actually know about that event until the day afterwards, when I got people calling me, saying, "Why weren't you there?" So I'm happy to have a conversation in the future, but I wasn't there because I didn't know about it.
Yeah, I found out the day before I was out of town. So, yeah, but I appreciate the work. I'm familiar with, with your organization and all that as well. So I do think there's a lot that we can do. I mentioned some of it earlier, but crosswalks are the cheapest intervention we can do. We have the daylight intersections. We need to flatten the potholes. One block south of here is an obstacle course. I've never seen the like of which, you know, just trying to get the east-west road out here. And just the, the number of different things we can do there is important to also look at enforcement from the lens of both cameras and our traffic division. That's a whole ongoing conversation as well.
I think we have time for maybe one more quick question.
Aww. My name's Sam Sacks, the No Hate Zone. Congratulations to all three of you. You give me hope. My question's simple. Fifty-three percent of the homicides last year in the city of Portland were people of color. Forty-three percent were black people. That trend over the last 15 years has been 40 to 7% of the homicides in the city of Portland are people of color. You mentioned a lot of things about dealing with, how do we deal with gun violence? Will you commit to at least $10 million to $20 million a year focused on supporting black and brown community members to address gun violence in their community? Thank you.
You want to go first? Yeah. So, thank you for the question. Thank you for the work you've done specifically in this space for a while. It's really important to recognize Sam Sacks for that. We did fund that. We had about $10 million, $11 million for the Office of Gun, of the Office of Violence Prevention. A lot of that was ARPA funds that expired in June, so we saw this massive decline down to under $4 million a year. We have to find a way to fund violence prevention, and that particular office does focus on communities of color. It's vital that that focus continues and also broadens, because we're also seeing about 40% of gun violence be in, among houseless folks, for example. But that funding for preventative holistic visions of community safety is a primary reason I ran. And as one of the co-chairs of the Community and Public Safety Committee, will be a part of every conversation we have.
Great, thank you. So I think John has some brief closing remarks, but really quickly, just to lighten the mood a little bit, I have a fun question. I don't know if this is fun, but now that you're an elected official, what do you do to relax? What have you done to relax? Do you binge a Netflix show? Do you go on a walk? Do you punch a pillow?
I have two kids. I'm not sure what you're talking about.
I don't have kids, and I play dodgeball, as I mentioned.
That's good.
And I play my guitar, so, yeah.
Great.
I go to a lot of sports ballgames, and yell a lot.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. A special thank you to Elena, Dan, and Samir for a real thoughtful dynamic. And we at City Club are rooting for you to help us, help us, City.
You've got us here, yeah. Thank you.
And Sophie, terrific job. Thank you so much for being our moderator tonight. Another shout-out to our sponsors, the ARRP of Oregon, the standard for this series sponsor, and Chevron. And thank all of you for coming. We're delighted and humbled, all the attendance and the interesting questions, and the engagement of this district, too. Now, City Club's still planning more events. To remind you again, on February 11th will be the second in our series of Meet the Councillors. And just next week, a week from today, we'll have that, the Election Reflections Program. So get those on your calendar. That'll be an interesting discussion of the 2024 election results. Again, I'm John Stride, and the president of City Club, and I'm going to make one more pitch. You have an opportunity to join City Club, and if you do tonight, that's $40 off. Use the code, all caps, N-E-W-40. Again, these folks are going to stay around and chat with you for a while, so feel free to engage. Good night.